I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our February 7th City Council meeting. Please note, the council's in attendance, full attendance, except for Mr. Jalapaska. So, our first items are items from council. I know we have one item, Ms. Scott, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
Do y'all want to talk about that?
Okay, well, you know, back when I was a kid, there were these things in the street, and we called them rain gutters. And now they're storm sewers, and once they became storm sewers, I lost track of which was a sanitary sewer and which was a storm sewer. And I just wonder how many people realize that basically we have streams running through our city. We just don't see them, they're not babbling brooks, but the streams are the storm sewers that collect the rainwater and the runoff on the streets. And that water goes directly to the Guadalupe River, directly to Garcida's Creek, goes directly to the waterways. And we have a responsibility, the city has a responsibility, to make sure that that's clean water that goes into those waterways. And so, I was traveling and happened to see a couple of storm drains, whatever you want to call them. These are in Missouri, but it doesn't really matter, because I think other people have seen them in other places. And basically, this is a drain, and I think you can see it there. That's a sidewalk that's got some paint on it, it's either paint, or it might be, I'm not sure what the median is, it might be chalk, but it just screams loudly, this is part of the water system. And there's a second one that I got from further away, I don't know if you can put that on. You can see that basically it's just some artwork around a drain, but it was, it's blue, it's water. This is, I was impressed with it, because it's artwork that says, this is part of the stream. It wasn't, hey, here's a neat place to put an interesting piece of art. It was saying, this is part of the waterway. Don't dump chemicals in here, don't throw your trash in here, this is the stream. So, I brought this picture back and have shown it to Charmel, and she's got some ideas. I think it's something that could enhance educational aspect within our community and make people aware of the fact that even though we don't necessarily see the water and the runoff, that it's there and it gets treated differently, so, I'll let you.
Visit it with Daryl, who's over Environmental Services, and he's sitting over there, so if I need help, he'll hop up. But, we talked about, you know, we do have an employee that is in the school system training and educating young people on waste, and so we felt like this would be a great addition to the education curriculum that Brianna does with V I S D, and it's called Waste in Place. So, we could add some, you know, to that curriculum, talking about storm drains and the purpose, and making sure we don't pollute them. And then, for our project, we can work with the school district through that curriculum and have the kids do art projects around the storm sewers, and hopefully, they will educate their parents and relatives. So, we thought that might be a great way to handle it. So, you know, that's something that, I don't know if Daryl wants to expand on it a little bit more, I'm sure he can.
Yes, ma'am. We have been working, over the last several months, on stormwater education and adding it into our total education package that includes everything from air quality to recycling. Now includes stormwater, but also litter education. And, so, we've kind of worked through different ideas. And as we were working through those ideas, through a meeting that they had last week with V I S D and some previous meetings, we thought it would be a good art project, both in the grade school and the high school level, where they would be able to bring forth the art first, and then we would be able to look and then pick from some of those to have that artwork done, mostly on the school, around the school campuses and those areas. And it would be done with chalk, so that way, if we, when we have rains, or if we have to clean it up, it'd be easier, but they can always go back and do, you know, we'll continue to do these projects as we go forward, just like recycling, just like air quality, everything will be repetitive, repetitive, repetitive. We're firm believers that, you know, the reason our recycling program is where it is, our air quality has gotten so much better is because we take these home through the kids, and the parents listen. They want a better world for their children, and we think this would work.
Would it work?
Yeah, I think it does. What does everyone else think about it?
I think if we have a defined area around schools, like it has to touch the school property or something, and I agree with chalk, because one of my concerns is going to be, how do you maintain and upkeep this? And it's just going to be another expense to taxpayers to do it, or take it back off. But, as long as it's not spread throughout, willy-nilly throughout the city, and randomness, and still have a say-so in what the artwork looks like.
We feel we'd have better control being on school campuses.
The first thing that Charmel asked me was, you know, what direction are you going with that? Are you thinking about beautification, are you thinking about education? To me, education is absolutely what the point of this is. It's not, you know, putting random varieties of art there, it's saying, this is part of our waterway.
And this is part of the Waste in Place curriculum that's put out by Keep America Beautiful, that we've been using since I got here nine years ago.
I have a comment. This wouldn't be citywide? You wouldn't want it to be citywide, you just want it around the schools?
Well, I'd like to perhaps see it start there, and, you know, if it takes off, or if we get some demands or requests, that maybe we look at it at that point, but for right now, I think it's a great idea to do it through the schools.
My concern is, if you let it just spread, you're going to have more graffiti than you're going to have art.
I agree.
And that's what it looks like to me. Now, if you limited the amount and the colors that you use, where it would just be like on the curb, going down into the sprout, then that would work, I mean, it wouldn't look like you've got graffiti on the sidewalk. See what I mean? Make it look like a waterfall, and the water just falling down, and use the natural colors of water, and you don't have all this extra graffiti extending out past that portion of the water falling down.
Keep them small.
Yes. You need to limit that, because if not, you're going to have graffiti all over the city.
Well, there's some strategic locations where there's high traffic, you know, like I notice around Shield School Elementary, there's a lot of kiddos that walk over that area, it might be a drain right there that's, can be done tastefully, so.
And that's one of the reasons we want to use chalk.
Okay.
Because it'll wash away and be easy to take care of and not. But definitely with the schools, in conjunction with the schools on the projects, on their property.
Yeah, I'd like to see the whole kind of program parameters. Because what if we have a rain and parrots washed off? Is it the city's responsibility to go clean that sidewalk, that art? Just a bunch of questions that I can foresee, and I don't want it to, you know, look haphazard and.
And we're not planning on kicking this off until the next school year. Because we're already coming to, you know, we've got testing, we've got everything, we've only got, what, three months left of school? So, we're looking at kicking this off, so we've got time to work through those things, and I can come back to council and talk about it, because it'll be a joint thing between us and V I S D.
We just want to make sure the idea was something, the educational direction was what Ms. Scott was wanting, and if council was okay with that before we spend a whole lot of time.
I'm okay with the educational direction, and I'm more siding with Josie, I remember Ms. Solis on the, I don't see it as beautification.
Bring us a map and a plan, and maybe each one of us could pick a drain and draw, what do y'all think? No? Okay. You don't want my artwork on there, I'm no good at it.
It would be graffiti.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The department does a great job with the school district in their educational programs, they've done a good job, so I, they'll do a good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. I've got a couple of things, anyone else want to? Real quick, we will have, right before E eight, we'll have a real quick executive session in the room next door. We'll come back out and do E eight, and whatever's left, and then, of course, we have an executive session after the meeting. Let's see. Trying to remember, there was something else. Well, the one thing I do want to mention, with respect to two items on the consent agenda, which are the contracts for our city manager and city attorney, I don't want to pull those, I just want to make sure to use the medium that we have to communicate with the public, that the, you know, the local paper, Victoria Advocate, reported in error that there were raises included in this particular budget year for these two staff members, which was not accurate, not true. We're already three months into this budget year, and staff is well aware that there were no budget, no pay increases at all in this budget year, unfortunately. So, and there was never any intention, I think, from council to provide raises for these two either, because no one else got them, and interestingly enough, and I'm very proud of the fact that they both individually told me beforehand that they wouldn't accept it anyway, because no one else got raises. So, proud of that fact, and just wanted to clear that up, so. And I think most of the public knows that by now, the Advocate's done a good job of correcting it and social media. I know I've attempted to help correct it, so I think we're good to go.
My only comment on it is, I wish when a story was incorrectly reported, and false information given, and I know that the Advocate, in a blog somewhere, has gone through it in detail, but the headline then becomes the inaccuracy of the story. And the next, today's paper should have had, Victoria Advocate makes a mistake in reporting the true story. That was the story today, it still wasn't about, and then you can go into the detail, but they seem very eager to ring the bell loudly on Monday's paper and create an issue that wasn't there, but don't choose to make the same statement when unringing the bell.
Understood. I was in a meeting this morning where the editor was present, and he very graciously indicated a mistake, just saying.
I know, I know they accepted the mistake, but I'm saying the headline ought to be that the Advocate incorrectly reported the story, and the truth is in this article. But, it's just the unringing of the bell is not done as loudly.
Okay, we're still in citizens, excuse me, items from council. If anyone else, okay, seeing nothing else. We'll move into the next area of our agenda, which is citizens' communications. I know we have one gentleman who would like to come speak with us, but of course, anyone can come forward and discuss any issue right now, just try to keep your comments to five minutes, out of respect for everyone else. I guess, Mr. Constantine, you want to come on up? Okay. And Mr. Constantine had requested to speak prior to the meeting, so he's on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for letting me come up here this evening. I have a couple of items I'd like to discuss with you, and it has to deal with the limousine business and the city ordinances containing, I mean, per, dealing with the limousine businesses. The first one is, I talked to Chief Craig, and I believe I addressed council about a year ago, about having fingerprint background checks, and we have never done anything about that yet. I'd like to know where the city stands with that. I think that it would give the parents and the people in our community a little bit calmer feeling when they do hire a service like ours. No company asks for more rules to be put on them, but we are, okay? Our company is the largest in the state of Texas, and we're very proud of it, and we're very proud of what kind of business we do. So, I would like to see the council go forward with having a fingerprint background check and to place the new permits for drivers, to have those to be a two-year permit. I mean, raise the fees, that's fine, is it, but make it a two-year permit, because fingerprints are not going to change over two years, okay? The second thing I'd like to discuss with the council is the operations of illegal companies here inside the city limits of Victoria. We have several companies coming into Victoria, one of them has pulled a city license, and thank God they did, as long as they're legal, I don't care. But it's the illegal companies coming into the city. If we're asked to go ahead and pull permits, to pay fees, let's make it an even playing field. I would like to see the city attorney come up with some kind of a fine for this, of the legal part of it, what we can do to fine these companies if they're in violation. Some of these companies, they know they're in violation of the law, they persist to do it, because you're not going to do anything, okay? That's just the bottom line. I mean, I've had police officers tell me that, you know, they've pulled over and they've talked to people who are running illegal things, and they said, I'm not running illegal business, I just hire, I just have a limousine, and I go ahead and I take people out for a little bit of money, but I don't have a business. No, that's a business, okay? So, let's go ahead and let's make it an enforcement. I understand, the city police department now understands, you know, about the stickers on the cars, they know what to look for. One of the officers stopped by today at our office and wanted to take pictures of it, so all the officers would know what they're looking for. That's the only thing that I ask for, you know, Mr. Mayor, is that we bring vehicles into this town for one day, and we actually pull a permit for one day, okay? Whether it be a funeral, whether it be somebody's wedding, or whatever it is, we will go ahead and pull the permits, and we'll be legal. So, all I ask for is fines to be leveled for the companies who are operating illegally, and for the enforcement of those ordinances we already have on the books.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, city manager, did you want to respond?
Just a couple of comments, and the fingerprinting issue, that is something that the police department's been working, they have to work with DPS on that, and it's taken a lot longer than we thought, so they are still working on that. And I do know that, well, Mr. Constantine has informed us of illegal operations that Chief Ray has taught, and Chief, you might want to stand up and talk, has spoken to those companies to tell them about the permitting process and enforcement.
Yes, we did. We met with, Bob and I met in about mid-January, and he provided me the same information, and his points are very valid. You know, he deserves a fair playing field, and we're committed to making sure that that happens. We did make the follow-ups with those companies, and as he said, one of them has complied with our ordinance, interestingly, without naming names, the other party thought just picking up friends and getting paid wasn't a business, so we had to educate that person as well. What we've done since our meeting with Bob is we've done some shift-level education, restressed the need to enforce our ordinances, if they're to mean anything, they have to be enforced, so they are out there looking for those violations. As for the fingerprints, those points are very valid, because they look for violations that occur outside this state, and it's something that certainly deserves, deserves to be, to be looked at.
And we're supportive of that, we've just got to get through the process of getting it done.
And your officers have to catch them to fine them, so.
That's true, that's true, they do have to catch them. Bob sent us some pictures, and I'm grateful for that, because I was able to pass that on to patrol, and they're out there looking for those violators. Again, some of it is just education of the companies that are wishing to engage in this kind of business, and some, like he said, one of them has since complied, and another is contemplating taking out a permit as well, so.
Very good, thank you. Okay, citizens' communication still open? Is there anyone else that would like to speak about anything at all? Like crowd this evening, so I guess not, okay. We'll close citizens' communication and move into ordinances. We do have one ordinance that does not have a public hearing.
Item C three is an ordinance replacing Chapter thirteen of the Victoria City Code to revise and update regulations pertaining to municipal utilities and services, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any discussion? You've seen this one already before, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. C one passes, and we'll go to consent agenda.
There are five items on the consent agenda, which we approve by a single vote tonight. The first is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of January nineteenth, excuse me, January seventeenth, 2017. The second is a resolution approving and adopting the current City of Victoria investment policy and list of qualified brokers who are authorized to engage in investment transactions for the City of Victoria, and declaring an effective date. The third is a resolution approving the purchase of eleven automatic external defibrillators from Physio Control Incorporated, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase, and declaring an effective date. The fourth is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Charmel Garrett as city manager, and declaring an effective date. And the fifth is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Thomas Gush as city attorney, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, for those five aye. Five items, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay. Consent agenda is passed, resolution C one.
Item E one is a resolution approving the acceptance of a federal Home Loan Bank of Dallas grant, and authorizing the city manager to execute a programmatic agreement with the Community Action Committee of Victoria, to assist with the special needs assistance program in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, are there questions?
I had a quick question, just, this is a really short timeframe, is that a problem?
It is a short program, our timeframe because of the program requirements, but it is not a problem. We have everything lined out, contracts are ready to be executed as soon as council approves this tomorrow morning. The contracts are planned to be executed tomorrow morning with the homeowners, and so we can plan to have everything done in sixty days.
Right, okay, so the background's already been done?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
How many years have we done this one? Do you, this is not new, this is a long time, right?
We've done it in the past, but we have not received the funding for the past two years, so we are bringing it back this year, we were fortunate to receive it. But I don't, I don't know how many years we had received it prior, but I know it's been at least two years since we last received funding.
And is it, and I, this actually, I was curious reading about this. What starts us looking for this grant? I'm glad we're going for it, but is, how are y'all made aware of it? Who says, hey, let's apply for this grant? Do we know, or is that just?
The F H L B program announces a call for the applications, and every year we have applied, we just have not received it the past two years.
I see. So you are just part of that communication loop, and, okay, very good. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, thank you.
Item E two is a resolution ratifying the expenditure of thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to purchase twelve sets of replacement firefighting structural protective clothing from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase, and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, we have a fire chief ready to answer questions. Is there any questions, anything you'd like to tell us, Chief?
The only thing I'd say is, we already have received the gear, which was really great for us. They turned that gear around in less than twenty days, and we were in a little bit of a bind, and that's the reason we're doing it as a ratification, is that all that gear got damaged on one event, and so we were in backup gear for some guys, and so we were very appreciative that they turned the gear out as fast as they did.
Good. I was, I am aware of the situation, and yeah, y'all needed to get that replaced, so unfortunate, so.
Yeah, it was.
It was no longer usable. Okay, no further questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you, Chief.
Item E three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the Homeland Security Grant application and purchase for a Throwbot XT to be used by the Victoria Police Department, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, are there questions? Everybody know what a Throwbot is?
No.
I'd like a little bit of explanation, I read through what was in here, and unfortunately, didn't get to go on the website.
Go to YouTube, and it's very interesting, that's what I.
I didn't get to, a chance to go on it and look at it.
You want to?
Sure, I'll be glad to. This device is one of a family of devices that allow us to use video real-time in a critical incident, inside an objective, to help us assess and plan the best way to respond to the incident without jeopardizing an officer's life and without provoking a deadly force incident. It's almost like an X-ray, if you might say. Before these devices came along, we were doing the best we could, making calculated probabilities as to what we might face inside, sometimes people who say they have guns don't in fact have guns, which changes the dynamic. Knowing this, with some kind of video device that we're able to place inside an objective, or a house, or a business that we've responded to, helps give us good information, so we can more accurately plan. Now, my personal experience with this, this particular device, I haven't had one of these. I've had other throuable cameras that you throw inside of a house. I personally had cameras in my prior department, I had six of them, and I deployed them into each room, and sometimes they'd land in a pile of clothes, and you couldn't do anything about it, once it was, once it was in there. The nice thing about this particular device is it has the capacity to ride itself, and you really just need one. Once you place it inside the objective, you're able to move it around from room to room. So, the idea is to get good, real-time intelligence about what's going on inside the objective, so you make better decisions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does it climb stairs? On the video, it didn't show it go up.
This one right here does not, and there is a limitation to the grade that it can. Believe that the one that we, that we have selected does, it has, has fins, they turn, they're able to extricate themselves from piles of laundry. You wouldn't believe how many times these devices, you know, back when they first came out about fifteen years ago, would get stuck in drapes and couches. So, the newer generations of these devices, these developers have done a good job of creating a device that can extract itself, get unstuck.
Second question is, does it take a bullet very well?
No, this, this particular device does not take a bullet very well. And you have to be real smart about when you deploy something like this. You, people can pick them up and throw them, they're virtually indestructive, but everything can be destroyed at some point.
Not on YouTube, but it looks pretty cool.
Yeah, this one on YouTube, if you watch the same one, it's like a pound and a half. You could throw it a hundred and twenty feet, I don't know who's going to be able to do that.
I have some guys.
And they had an interesting situational awareness with a gunman in a room, and they placed it, or just over the window.
Correct.
And could see where he was, and it's interesting, I could see, were very valuable. So, and of course, this is just for a grant.
Correct, this is permission to apply.
Yeah, we may not get the device, but, okay.
I guess, I'm sitting here thinking about, I mean, there's training on when it's appropriate to use these things, and when you're going to end up in more trouble than you should be in, or.
Right, the, on these, these are, these are made solely for use in critical incidents. When, when I would have a legal right to be in there and look at them face-to-face, to make entry, but I don't want to risk an officer's life or provoke a deadly force incident, if I can avoid it. There's a means to communicate through this, kind of, kind of get some dialogue going, and hopefully negotiate a peaceful conclusion.
Thank you for reading my question very clearly.
There's not going to be any matching from our, you know, from the police department on this, it's all from the grant?
Correct, there's no match involved with this.
Okay.
The best part. It's expensive, but.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay. Mr. Bucknight?
No, I guess I need to go look at the video.
Yeah, and on the next one too, you're going to want to look at the video on the next one, but, okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay.
Item E four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the Homeland Security Grant application and purchase for a DJI Inspire One unmanned aerial system to be used by the Victoria Police Department, and declaring an effective date.
So move. Second.
Questions, there's a good video on this one too.
So, how's this one compared to the one that we just accepted from the Victoria One Hundred Club that Chief Craig said's not going to be available for renting out?
For halftime performances, right? This one is, is a little bit different. I'm going to ask Lieutenant Turner to step up, he is my technical expert. We're both pilots, so we're very sensitive to the issues of UAVs, but I've put the lieutenant here in charge of that, and he'll be able to tell you the exact differences.
I'm not sure exactly what platform the fire department just purchased, but the DJI company has been in business for some time, and they've really evolved lately into the commercial drone applications, or UASs, as the government likes to call them. The Inspire One is, is, it already has a predecessor, the Inspire Two is available, but we can still purchase the one at a, at a great cost savings. But, it is a versatile platform, it's powered by electricity, it has four motors, it's largely constructed of carbon fiber and blown ABS plastic material, so the weight is, remains quite light. It, it has the ability, the one that we're seeking. that we're seeking has the ability to film in 4K ultra-high definition real-time video, and also can be retrofit within minutes with either thermal imaging camera systems, or, yes, there's a picture there, that is the Inspire One. And the camera you see mounted beneath it right now is the 4K ultra-high-def video camera. And aside from the thermal imaging we can also equip it with, and we'll be asking for in the grant, infrared camera systems. Now, aside from the obvious being able to position this thing above a critical incident to monitor the activities, it can remain aloft indefinitely and remain on station. It has, it uses GPS navigation plus a glow nest system that kind of works in conjunction with the GPS for, you know, that much greater accuracy. It's, it has the ability to fight the elements, you know, on windy days, it can, it can counteract any, within reason, force that a gust of wind can bring. Aside from using it during critical incident to monitor an incident, we foresee it also being extremely valuable in just about anything else where a bird's eye view would be considered mission-critical or invaluable. So right now, the system, we've selected this one because it is widely popular in the industry, both law enforcement, fire service, you know, lots of government agencies use these, so the prices are rather affordable. They're robust, they're strong, and replacement parts are available pretty readily also.
What's the average flight time? You said it can fly indefinitely, but that.
Yes, sir. Well, the average flight time per battery is about 28 minutes. Now, that is based on an estimate. It's kind of like how you drive your car. If you drive conservatively, you can really stretch your mileage, or if you're really wanting to really see what it's got, you can significantly decrease the mileage. Well, the same thing holds true here. Now, this platform will not be used for any sort of evasive flight tactics or maneuvers. It will basically just be, pardon me, put up in the air and told to stay put. So with that, we can get about 28 minutes of flight time, and we will have enough batteries and charging cycles on the ground to allow for repeated landings and takeoffs. Just come down long enough to replace the battery and back up in the sky, and we can stay there, you know, until the pilot becomes so exhausted he has to sleep, so.
Very good. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question related to drones, not related to that item. That's why I held it. But I'd like to ask staff to bring us some information at some point about drones that are owned by citizens. I had a citizen ask me, you know, what the city was doing about drones, and my response was, I think that they're mostly covered under federal law, but I don't really know the answer, and if one person asked me, that means some others are wondering, too.
Well, I can answer some of that for you.
All right, that'd be great.
The average citizen falls under two categories. They're either modelers or hobbyists. Now, an average citizen who falls into that category can own, in fact, they can own this very drone system here, and they can fly it at will without any government oversight. Now, of course, they have to fly it with caution, basic common sense. As with anything that we do, we have to be cognizant of persons, or property, or other obstacles, but by and large, they're really not, not regulated by the government. Now, the police department on the other side, since we are classified as a government entity, we will be held to such a high standard that we have to apply for many different things via the FAA, plus each pilot has to be licensed by the FAA. So we can't just, you know, deploy this thing at will anytime we want. This is going to involve cooperation with Victoria Regional Airport. We essentially at times have to file the equivalent of a flight plan, contact our tower, because we do have a controlled airspace, though it's not round the clock like some major cities. But certain times of the day, we do have a controlled airspace, and the classification of airspace that we will be required to fly in is sometimes pretty close to commercial air, air traffic glide slopes when they're coming in. Now, sometimes glide slopes are, can extend several miles from the airfield, but that's not something we in Victoria will have to worry about around the clock, especially since we don't have a large commercial traffic coming in. We just can't sustain it. So we can fly it safely within the airspace, and there are several rules that we have to abide by before we can even, you know, consider taking flight with it. But if you want to respond to the citizens that ask you, you know, of course, they can do what they want. They're not at risk of the FAA coming and issuing sanctions because they flew too late in the evening, or they flew too high, or made too much noise, aside from, you know, any other applicable noise ordinance. But just surrounding the operation of the drone, they are, they're free and clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Very good. Okay, so we're on E5?
E5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for a traffic signal project at US 77 at Mallett Drive, any amount of $65,000, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Everybody knows where this is at, right?
Mm-hmm.
Like, their word comes out by Holy Family Church along the loop there.
We're doing both sides of the freeway.
That's correct.
Okay.
This is all funded by the Self-Stacks Development Corporation.
The $65,000, our portion is, yes.
Okay.
And since that's, I have to gripe, that's a state highway, so in order for us to get it bumped along, we had to contribute financially. Yeah.
The engineering study, they're paying for the actual installation and the traffic signal.
And so, and I don't think we mentioned the whole amount because the construction is $350,000.
That's correct.
For a traffic light.
That's correct.
Just making sure that's real clear, because people ask me that a lot. They can't believe it. Well, okay.
It's just the traffic light. If we want to do anything with the intersection, that comes later.
This does not include any intersection improvements.
Which, yeah, that's in the CIP, I think.
It is, in a subsequent year.
Yeah. And there will be no problem with coordinating, they're not going to put a light somewhere, then we have to come around and move that light because we're going to add a right-turn lane, I hope, so.
We will design that, this light, with those future improvements in mind.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, if that passes, we're on E6.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for redevelopment of Technically Based Local Limits Phase II with Allen Plumber and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $64,000 and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Or Lynn, you have anything to share with us?
Here to answer questions, Mayor.
Okay.
Lynn, if you don't mind, I know they were supposed to start work this week. Did they get started yesterday on this sewer line?
Oh, well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm ahead of you, aren't I? I'm sorry. Okay, never mind.
But yes, they did.
When you get there, explain that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I do, I do want to elaborate on that one.
Sure, sure.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on E7.
E7 is a resolution ratifying the city manager's execution of an agreement with Huff and Mitchell Incorporated in the amount of $186,050 for the Country Club Emergency Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project between Hollywood Boulevard and Albany Street and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve E7.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion with gusto there, and in a second. I know that's important, Mr. Bognight, it is me, too, so.
Certainly. And the contractor did mobilize yesterday, started making contacts with affected residents. They've done line locates, and so, and they worked again today, and they'll keep after it now. It's going to be a, you know, relatively slow process because it, that line is in the rear of those homes. It's not very easy access, a lot of hand-digging is going to be involved, fence removal, and that sort of thing. So it will be a slow process. We're hoping to make a point repair where the, where the cave-in is, and so that they can then get a cable pulled through, and then pipe burst that line, pulling another line inside of that one, so that most of it's done trenchlessly. And then, of course, they'll have to come in and hand dig down all the services and reconnect them, and then backfill.
Wow. It's a lot of work.
And the estimated duration?
Mike, do you know how long? Three weeks.
Would know if it don't rain.
Well, I mean, that's better than it's, you know, than the duration you've been having to pump.
Absolutely.
Just been before Christmas.
That's right. December 16th, when we actually discovered, or December 14th, we discovered we had a problem there. We were still getting some flow through the line, although through the holidays, we were pumping it and trying to solicit quotes for trenchless technology. We did that. But then, of course, we had a, so we were planning on bringing this to you, not as a ratification, but as a, approving a contract to go do that. Then we had a bad rainstorm on January 23rd, which caused the line to then completely collapse, and so, and we lost all flow, and so then we had to shift gears and say, "Well, we need to mobilize a contractor now and change this to a ratification," and so that's where we are this evening.
And I had one more question. It's escaped me. Oh, the, when we're digging through people's yards, removing fences, any concrete in driveways that'll be made whole at the end of the project?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
How old was that line? Do you know, Lynn?
I don't know.
Forty years, fifty?
I don't know. It's, it's a concrete pipe, and, and that's what we're seeing around town. You know, the concrete pipe has exceeded its useful life now, and the gases in the sanitary sewer have eaten the tops off of that, corroded the tops off the pipe, and so it has a tendency to try to collapse then.
I think someone told me that the first house in that area was in '57.
Wow.
That's what I would guess, is 50s. That was kind of concrete pipe.
Sixty-five, yeah. Yeah, I've had a few conversations with some of the neighbors about it, and appreciate y'all, you know, when the city manager called me and said, "We just need to do this, and we'll ratify it later," I said, "Absolutely," and I know counsel understands that, just to get it fixed, because they're, you know, the pumper truck is large and noisy, et cetera, but there's no other option. So I appreciate y'all handling it the best you can. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? The ayes have it. So now we're going to have a quick, we're going to recess to executive session, very briefly, right there, and then we'll come back out and finish the agenda.
The city council will recess now into executive session at 5:42 PM on the 7th day of February 2017. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. Thank you.